I am going to start at nine, I'm sorry, 1907 or seven minutes after 7:00 PM. And I am calling this meeting to order at that time. I will introduce the planning commission members that are here. We have Jill Burkett at the end, Kevin Mullin, and Erica Burner. And we do have a quorum, even with two people missing. Okay. Do I have any additions, deletions to the agenda items? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
No one.
All righty. We are here tonight for a public hearing on the proposed zoning regulations which are posted on the website. They are 65 pages, including the two appendices. And at the last public hearing, somebody asked if we could show all of the changes. There is also, I believe, a chart, or there was a chart when I checked on the website, that showed where a majority of the changes are. However, if you do read on the website, you will notice things that are in red, they're in yellow, and the script is a little bit short because off to the right side is all of the changes that are there. And obviously, the red and the yellow on the final copy will go away. And for those of you, I've had people ask, what about the numbers on the side? The numbers on the side will go down too. They are here primarily because it makes it a lot easier if somebody says, for example, on page 37, on line 158, rather than, okay, on 37 and halfway down and over five words. So that's the only reason why those lines are there, is just for ease of identifying any changes that need to get made, or mistakes, or typos, or anything. They too will go away. The regulations as they stand right now have been vetted by Logan, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name. Excuse me?
Solomon.
Solomon, thank you. At the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, he is a town planner. He did ask us to include certain verbiage, and it's not necessarily identified, but it is in red, on addressing homes because of the new Vermont state statute. I've also received comments from the public over the past year on different things, and one was from Rob Barker, who basically said, you forgot to include the new state statute that addresses paramilitary training. It is in here. And it is referenced wherever I can reference it. Yes, it made it in. Yeah. So, as a state statute, even though, to be honest with you, as a state statute, it really technically doesn't have to be here, but it's better to have it in. We have gone through this, and as much as possible, the current one, which was approved in 2015, in the opening sentence of the introduction, I believe, said that there was a reference to Act 24, Chapter 117, and henceforth would be identified as "the act." I have gone through, we have gone through, the document, and we've taken out the word "the act" and actually put in the reference right there. So people don't have to go back and forth as they've had in the past. The definitions, in the current one, the definitions are in the front of the document, and I believe it runs about two and a half pages. Over the years, there have been more and more and more definitions that have had to go in, primarily because if we all have, are working, sorry, if we are all working from the same definition, it does make it much, much easier. And so, we went through and changed some of the definitions, and again, where referenced, if it, if there's an aggregate, for example, I'm on page 69 and on line 206, 39, rather, sorry, agricultural structure, and there's a reference right there to it. So if somebody doesn't like what's in here, which is taken directly from the statutes, they can look it up. Over the course of the time, to be honest, and to be above board, things have changed on definitions. So what, one of the things that the planning commission did was, we took West Rutland's zoning, we took Proctor's zoning regulations, and each one of us in the past year have taken a section of it and have put it into a matrix. So for example, when somebody is talking about, and I'll just pick one, in ours, it's Article 8, trailer recreational campground and recreational equipment storage. They've taken that section, and where it's addressed in West Rutland, it's on there, where it's addressed with Proctor, it's on there, and when it's addressed by us, it's on there. And over the course of the past year, we have taken and looked to see how our definition, or how ours, our definitions crack up against their definitions. And in some cases, we have taken definitions from West Rutland because that is the newest one that we had access to, and it has been approved by the VCLT. So the assumption is, if the definitions are approved by the VCLT, then they're good. So they have replaced ours. And for those of you that go online, and you'll see some in here, where it might be in blue, that could be an addition, floor area patron, for example, is in yellow, multifamily dwelling, those are different definitions. So you may see some strike-throughs, you may see some reds and everything. Before this final, final version will go through, all of that will be taken out, and when the planning commission submits it, they'll all be taken out because there'll be a final draft. Now, as I have said, Logan Solomon has gone through this, and I also believe that the town attorney has gone through it, not very, I don't know how deeply, but I do know that the town attorney pointed out several problems that we had, and we addressed those and corrected those, using the terminology that he suggested. So we think, we hope, we assume, that we are ready. This is the third public hearing on this, and we really would like to move it on to the select board. The select board in the process, by the way, will also have to call a public hearing after they accept it. And then, once the select board accepts it, and the public hearing, and it passes the public hearing, and the select board thinks it's ready for, if you'll excuse the expression "prime time," then the voters of Wallingford will have to approve it. So we're not finished by a long shot. But we'd like to move this on because it's been a while, and we really do need some of the updates on the regulations. There are things in here in the definitions, for example, like tiny houses, that are not in the current one, and they need to be addressed a little bit. And other things are coming up, and they need to be addressed. So with that, any comments from the board?
You covered it.
So, any questions? We'll open it up for questioning. When you do ask a question, please identify yourself so we'll know who asked the question. Yes?
Doug Plotch. I'm not sure if I have a more of a comment, I think. I only had the electronic version to look at, didn't have a hard copy. But on, at least on the electronic version, there were no maps attached of the different districts, and so I couldn't really, you know, tell. I would guess I'd offer a suggestion, and maybe include a PDF, at least in the electronic version, that displays the maps. There was no really way to tell whether or not any of the current maps, lines of the districts had been changed or not.
They have not.
Okay. But I couldn't tell that with this version. Again, I didn't have access to a hard copy. Are there maps with the hard copy?
Currently, the maps are located in the town clerk's office, the zoning office, and they will be included in the town plan. The zoning doesn't have to have the maps. We can, and we can try to include it, we've tried. The problem we have is, where is the historic district?
Where what?
Where is the historic district of Wallingford? That's, we've wrestled with that because we do apply for historic village designation. Traditionally, I think we've all thought that it's from the end of where Seven merges to the Bridge. However, the Historical Society of Vermont says it's someplace else. They do reference it, by the way. The, there's just one slight problem. The names of the streets and the addresses have all been changed. And I have been working, actually, with the Rutland Planning Commission. Unfortunately, they didn't have someone to help out with the maps at the time, to see if we can overlay something that's a little bit new. Otherwise, it may entail literally going through the files, or walking the streets and saying, okay, I live at 65 South Main Street, for example, all right, well, in the old map, 65 South Main Street corresponded to, and see if we can draw some kind of a map. I have also been told that it loosely follows the fire district here, but that doesn't go for the neighborhood commercial, it doesn't go for the agricultural, it doesn't go for the forest and recreation, it doesn't go for the industrial. So it literally means that we're almost going to have to do this one step at a time. But yes, we are looking at the maps.
Great. Thanks. That would be helpful, in my view.
We're not arguing, ma'am. We agree.
Always about the maps.
Okay? Anything else?
Okay, I'll go ahead and talk to her. More comments and general opinions than questions. Zoning is probably a good thing, like most good things, you have too much of it. My personal opinion, you've long passed that line, way beyond that. But the thing that really gets to me the biggest is setbacks and buffers. I don't like them. You know, and I find it a bit ironic that the enabling legislation for zoning in general referenced, you know, health and safety. And there's definitely some safety in having a small, small buffer. You know, having row houses, there's a real danger unless you've got really sharp fire departments and lots of facilities for them to work with. I grew up, growing up, when we grew up in New York, you know, they had, you know, like a lot of places, you can find them here in town too, houses very, very close together, there was a driveway between them. They had a house fire, didn't burn the house down, but it peeled the paint off the neighbor's wall on the, I mean, so yeah, some setbacks is definitely a good thing. But looking at, and I don't think this is a change with the way it's printed, but I do remember about six months ago, when there was a flurry of attention to our zoning, probably in the response to one of these meetings, you guys probably know the exact date, I see a survivor there, and where some things came out, so, because somebody had criticized, had mentioned they thought one of the buffers was too big, and their response was, that's not a change, that's the way it is. So with that, a little bit here, I think that particularly some of the buffers in the agricultural and rural residential, specifically on, I don't have the page number, but it's minimum dimensions, and if you are trying in the agricultural rural residential, if you want to do something residential, it makes a big difference whether you've got town water and sewer or not. And I haven't looked at the maps because we don't have them online, but I got a pretty good guess that most of the agricultural rural residential does not have town water and sewer. So a good chunk of that is going to fall under those set of regulations, which requires 150 feet of front, front lawn, set back for a house or whatever, to the road. That's an awful long driveway to build and maintain. That makes things more expensive. We're trying to, housing, if we can't make it less, more affordable, at least keep it from getting less affordable.
Right.
And these are the kinds of things, not only does it cost more, I don't know 100 driveway, it obviously depends a lot on the terrain you've got to work with, but a truckload of stone, it costs $300, doesn't do it very far for 150 feet if you're building something. So, and then, it's not just that, it's the gift that keeps on giving, because every year, when you get, every time you get a snowstorm, you got to plow it, it's going to cost more to plow 150 feet than it is to plow 50 feet. And you're probably going to have a harder time finding somebody to do it, too. But is, my point is, that's just one example of why we've got buffers that are just getting out of hand, and setbacks, and that can, that can force people to put their building on the, not the best part of a lot because of the way landslopes, quite often, the best part of a building lot, a lot tends to be relatively close to the road, in the valley, high enough up to go off a flood, but not so far, you're getting into low edge and everything else. So that, that's the biggest thing I have. I, you know, I see no reason for that big of a change, which effectively means, I mean, it refers to a lot depth of 150 feet. But by the time you add the 50-foot in the rear to that, and if you give your building maybe 50 feet, that you effectively have 250-foot lot depth that you need, which, I haven't done the math for a two-acre lot, but it may be pushing, but again, it makes it much more, would make it much more difficult to build your property, build your house, or whatever you're going to do. So that's, that's the biggest thing, and side guard setbacks, I mean, once you get, for safety, really, once you get beyond, each person has to have 20 feet, you haven't really, then you reach the diminishing term, you know, you're going to have an awful big house fire, you know, really, with a 40-foot gap there. And I know a lot of our setbacks are 30 feet on the side, some are even bigger. So that's, and then, one other thing, fences, non-agricultural fences. I cannot understand why you make a person who wants to put up a residential fence, bring it in four feet from his property line. Because what that's, in my mind, what's that's going to create, is that you're going to have this little narrow space, you can't even turn around to push mower in that space, so you're going to create a very unmaintainable space. It's going to get, no matter how diligent people are, it's going to get overgrown, it's going to be knocked, swede, all that stuff, and now we're going to start growing there. All the unpleasant animals that we prefer not to live, find, love those little spaces like that, it's just, and it's taking, and you know, if you've got a smaller lot, losing eight, a total of eight feet of use of it, hurts. Why?
That is, put in there so you can maintain the fence.
And, yeah.
And, and we actually have tried to imagine maintaining a fence and four things about what you need. And if you've got a great neighbor who doesn't mind you walking on their land to fix your fence, that's great. But if you have a contrary neighbor, now you've got a problem.
Which gets me to my next point, which you mentioned in the zoning, about getting permission, written permission from the neighbor, landowner. Again, to use, in order to use your own property, I have a, I have a place to.
No, no, the written permission thing is, if you're going to be.
On the line.
Shortening, yeah, if you're going to be on the line.
Yeah, and again, I have the issue with having to get the neighbor's permission to do things on your own property.
Well, you wouldn't be on your own property, you'd be on his to maintain it.
I've said, I'm not going to argue.
No, just say, if you put a fence on your line, then you have no space to maintain it.
But if I, if you lose, you're, you're taking away somebody's ability to use a fence using their own property. That, I'm not going to argue.
Not taking away, we're reducing it.
You're taking some.
All right. And having been a victim of this one time, it's difficult to deal with when somebody says, you can't. All right? So all we were trying to do was preclude two neighbors going at it. That's what we were trying to do. And by allowing it with the neighbor next door saying, here's written permission, you can do that, we thought that that was a way to get out from around it, because it gives him his space back, and we're all happy.
I don't understand why, this is one of the problems. This, that's an extra burden on somebody who wants to use a piece of their own property. That's a burden.
All right. May I ask? You put a fence up.
Yep.
It's right on the property line, and you have a neighbor that you're not getting along with whatsoever.
Mm-hmm.
And now you have to paint the fence.
I reach over the side and do the best I can.
Dead.
It's a three-foot thick fence, I can put a log stick on it, brush.
Right.
I had it six inches, six to 12 inches inside the line, just so I didn't get over the line. That's my answer.
But what if it's a six-foot?
I get the tall ladder.
Yeah, most people aren't going to do that.
Yeah.
Realistically.
And realistically.
At least I don't have to try and mow this little space that I can't even turn a law, push mower around then.
I got you.
Because if I have the, if I have a side discharge, I'm going to be discharging right against my fence, and it's going to need painted real quick, and I certainly don't want to be pushing it on the neighbor's side. It's very difficult to maintain.
Sort of like a protective buffer.
Yeah, it was a.
Keeping good neighbors.
It was a difficult thing to find a workable solution. And we felt the written permission was a workable solution. That you don't give up anything. If everybody's happy, slappy, then this doesn't even come into play.
Yeah, but the real world is, we know not everybody is.
Yes.
And why should the neighbor have veto power over a person using that extra three and a half feet of their property? Why should the neighbor have veto power?
It's not veto.
It is!
Can I weigh in on this a little bit? For folks who don't know me, I'm Jeff Byzusie. I've lived in Wallingford 40 years, been the Wallingford zoning administrator for six. I'm still a zoning administrator, I've been working for a number of towns. The aim of my existence as a zoning administrator is fences. Usually fences are a result of people not getting along, not people trying to be good neighbors, despite the old adage. So, the purpose of having a boundary line agreement, this one has covered a lot of bases, I wish you'd taken the West Rutland example, because the first thing you want to do on a boundary line is agree where it is. And most properties, especially in the annual residential zoning districts, are probably not serving. So that's the number one thing, where's the boundary? If you don't agree with the boundary line, you're not going to get a written agreement between two property owners. So then you have, as a Plan B, you know, space it off. But the real life example is, when you have a boundary line fence, at least this language clearly says, who owns the fence, it's part of the written agreement criteria. So that means the neighbor who has the other side of the boundary isn't going to hang his ladders and his canoes on your fence. He's not going to paint your side of the fence purple, or his side of the fence purple, while you want white on your side. So there's good language, it's not perfect. There's no such thing as perfect, especially when it comes to fences. But, but it's better than it is today, so.
And believe me, I fully understand, because I have a narrow lot, and it's 10 feet on both sides of my lot, which is 20 feet. I share a drive.
I know, yeah.
My neighbors and I, we get along great. If they ever sell their house.
You're going to be crossing your fingers.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. And my boundary line is identified, it's right in the gate of the schoolyard. That's on one side. The other side is a rock, that's six feet from Ann and Carl Buffham's garage. That's our boundary line, which by the way, coincides with the side of my house. So, you know, this is, this is one of the reasons, is basically to give people, I mean, you know, if you look at a lot of fences, they're, I mean, I would think if I'm building a fence, I'm going to put the smooth side out, and I'm going to put the other side on to me, because it just makes my property look better. But people turn them around because they want the smooth side in, and they want the other side out. We didn't address that.
No, you didn't. It says, the.
Yeah, we tried, yeah.
The smooth side goes out.
Yeah. And, and, because a lot of people, why, you're putting a fence up, and there's no reason why your neighbor can't put a fence up too, right on the same pole, and two of you have beautiful-looking fences, but who knows? We looked at as many examples as we could, and yes, we probably should have taken the one from West Rutland, but we thought we would try and keep this a little loose. There's nothing to say you have to get written permission from your neighbor, it was really suggested.
If you want it on the line, you do.
If you want it on the line, you do, yes. Because what happens if your neighbor sells the house? And now all of a sudden, you get a new person there, and they don't like you, they don't want you on your, on the property, and come to find out, when they do the survey, your fence is now three inches into their property line.
That's why you might, you know, just put it six to nine inches of what, inside or even, but not four feet.
Well, actually, we branded about a good five feet before that, five to 10 feet, so the compromise, I believe, was the four feet.
But if you're talking about a 30 or 40, a 40-foot wide lot, losing eight feet is a big chunk.
Um, I know. Trust me. I know.
Yeah, so.
But on the other hand, losing a little bit and keeping peace in the neighborhood sometimes is well worth it. You know, you know, it's, it's always a guess, and we try. Okay. Other questions? Yes?
Rob Barker, West Hill Road. Been here 50 years, almost. I sent you a message before you sent it to where it was, with some ideas. I'm most familiar with our original zoning, which was 1971, and was first in Rutland County, right?
Uh, that I don't know.
I would say it's that. Pittford had zoning in 1963.
Well, are they in Rutland County?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, Timith used to brag about '72, and I said, no, '71. You know? But it's, it's very powerful legislation, the enabling for towns, and a great benefit to how our town is turning out after the zoning. So I had, it took me, I had to read that zoning regulation several times before I got it. Road furniture is.
[laughing]
Road furniture is not your driving. Road furniture is a line in front of your building, no matter where it is. It's 100 feet, 50 feet long, doesn't have to be any, but it can't touch another building. That's road furniture, right?
Yeah.
And it took me a while to figure that out. So we never had demolition as a reason to get, it was never on the first zoning regulations. And that's what I was familiar with. And, and as I read it, and issues came up about people wanting to, I didn't think we had authority. And I didn't, when I wrote this thing to you about that, I don't think we have enabling legislation. But I didn't want to look like a fool when I came here, so I went back and looked at the legislation again, found out I'm too late. There is legislation, and it, and it, and it's, no building should be raised or removed. And so I started thinking about why we want to not just let somebody remove something they're being taxed on. But I suppose we would have a problem if Wallingford House said, we're going to get rid of it and put a McDonald's here, so, okay. We'd have a, we'd have a problem with that, you know? But I wonder, too, violation is $50 a day until you correct it. So if somebody, somebody destroys your house, they're going to have to pay $50 a day until they build it back again. But I understand, I understand why. Thinking about it more, you know, what, what different possibilities. Thinking about it more, you know, what, what different possibilities there might be rather than just, "I'm getting rid of my garage." So, I understand there, there is supporting legislation for that. I, uh, had the same, uh, question about the setbacks, the road setbacks. My house is on West Hill Road and it's 15 feet from the right away. You know, it's right there. And so that's in keeping with the, the nature of the, of, of the, uh, and so it's hard for me to understand if, uh, water and sewer, I don't, I don't think there's any...
Is there water in here?
A R R.
Water in here?
In my yard?
Property that has water and sewer. And I don't think it's going to happen.
Is it moving? Yeah.
Anytime soon. Uh, I don't think it's going to happen. We're going to put water. I don't think it's going to happen. So, that, that was a concern for me. And I did, I didn't know that, uh, our governor already made it illegal for paramilitary training. But it's good to have it on there. And I'm kind of racking my brain trying to think about what else might be dropped on us. What, what else don't we want here? You know?
Exactly.
I mean, I, I, I feel for Paul, you know, they didn't know, they got blindsided. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're protected now, but it's, zoning is here to protect us. And I don't think we've gone too far with it. I think it's, it's great and it's served us well, the way, way it is. The whole idea is not to tell you what you do with your property, it's that your neighbor can't do to hurt your property. Uh, you know, and, and I think you understand that and, and you'll recognize the wisdom of, of the legislature for, to do this. And the same with Act 200. You have to have planning. There's a lot of towns, and it's so difficult. You, you have a 500 board now?
Uh, yes.
Used to be nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and it's hard to get a consensus for, for many, many towns. It's just like, never going to happen. Never going to happen. So, I commend you for, uh, refining the ordinance in the way you have. And, uh, I didn't, I didn't have time to read it all. I, I missed the fence part, and I kind of think maybe one foot would be better than four. You know? Uh, you know, I'm not saying go on the other property, but just, just to make your property your own and you don't have to owe somebody else to, to use it. One foot, you couldn't get your, and all kinds of trees and everything will grow up in that too. But there's fences like that all over town already, you know?
And we're not telling them to take them down.
No. No, grandfather.
Bob, just want to correct one thing. We're not saying you can't raise a house or demolish it. We're just saying you need to get a permit before you do it.
Right.
That's all.
But, well, well...
Yeah.
Just so we know.
The law, if you, if you do it without a permit, you broke the law, so...
Well, and primarily, one of the other reasons for, one of the other main reasons for requiring permits for different things...
What?
I'm sorry. One of the reasons for requiring permits for doing different things, by the way, is not so much for, and maybe I shouldn't say this because it is tax time, is if, if say, for example, uh, you raise your, your garage, well, then it can, then the lister is informed and can if necessary.
But I don't think there's, uh, I don't think the, uh...
I was just...
I know that's the way it works, but I don't think the listers and zoning are together.
Oh, yes. Not only that, I talked to, yeah, we are.
Every time a permit comes in, somebody's going to want it, the listers are going to go out and see it and add.
Yes.
You know, but, uh...
No, actually, a copy of your permit does go to the lister.
What?
A copy of the permit, if it, if it deals with something the lister is in charge of, the lister gets a copy of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, he's, he keeps tabs. For example, if you, if, you know, if I had the, if I had my druthers, you know, I'd have a three-car garage on my property.
No, I, I, if I...
He would know it.
If I tore my garage down, I'd be down here the next day to say, "Take it off the list."
Sure.
To take it off the list. But, uh, it's a lot to understand and it's, and it's difficult and it's extensive and it's, it's getting more complex. Cell towers, solar dishes, whatever you have. So, uh, my, my comments. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Just a, a point about the permit. And the more, I think that's one of the things that's very frustrating to a lot of people. Get a permit for this, get a permit for that. Oh, you need another permit for that. It's very frustrating for people. And years ago, when we had border zoning adjustment, I was on that board. And one of the things I really felt sorry were people who, and, and, well, a lot of things tend to be more likely in the village, who, whereas zoning had, now setbacks again, which didn't really take into account where every house and, you know, not every house was totally compliant existing with the, uh, so, so people needed to get, the classic example was a deck, okay? They're too, they don't have to, they don't, you can't, there's no, there's no way you can put it in without bumping into the setback. So they have to, so they'd have to go into zone, get denied, go, then the zoning, uh, border adjustment here and there. This cost them money, this cost, back then it was like a hundred thousand, in paper, advertising, newspaper for the meeting, for all this. So if, so if somebody decided Memorial Day weekend, "Hey, let's put a deck on the house." And they're just a little bit out and they couldn't do it without being in perfect compliance, there's no way they were going to have that deck. You forget about 4th of July, it probably wasn't going to happen by Labor Day, just because the time and things had to happen for them to get the permission. So people just don't, you know, and, and, people, anybody, you remember Governor Dean Davis?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. He wrote a couple of books, Vermont stories, a lot of lawyer stories from the 1930s and thereabouts and beyond at that time. But one of them could have been in the 50s took place. He, um, was, one of the legislatures, legislature at the time had enacted some statute, I don't know the details, it doesn't really matter, it wasn't zoning, I'm sure of that, but it was something that enabled towns to do something. Okay. Didn't, and one of the legislators there talking, he says, "My constituents are not going to like this." Well, why not? It's perfectly voluntary. My constituents don't like to be told what they can do.
Well, let's, let's face it, we're all adults and nobody likes to be told what we can do. But as it was pointed out, it's not so much what you can, Kenyon cannot do, it's what your neighbor can't do to you. And, uh, with zoning. Uh, and there, I, I have, and I think Jeff can back me up on this, you get a phone call saying, "My neighbor's doing this, this, and this. Can they do it?" Uh, yes, according to the zoning, they can. Or no, according, they can't. And then we, we act. Right? Jeff?
Yeah.
You know?
I'm, I'm, pardon. I, 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 I'll relay, I'll relay a side note, if, if I'm allowed. When I first moved to Vermont in 1980-something, early 80s, uh, there was a newspaper article, the Rollin Herald, I still have it today, it was a full-page article about us Vermonters. And it did a demographic story about the state. And at that time, and all of us in the room are old enough, I think, to remember the difference between a native Vermonter and a flatlander. Yes? Anybody need a definition? Okay. So, so when I came here, of course, I was a flatlander. My son was born here and still people thought he was a flatlander. But that said, um, the newspaper article, and I remember this clearly, 73% of the state of Vermont were native Vermonters at that point in time. 46% of the households burned wood as their primary source of heat. There's all these statistics that just 40 years, which I don't think is anything but a blink in the eye, um, is changed around. Today, 75% of the state of Vermont is comprised of flatlanders. And the native population has moved out or shrunk to be about the rest of the state. So, when they come into the state, the, the age-old attitudes, uh, that you respected your neighbor's property, you asked permission, you knew who your neighbor was, you communicated with your neighbor when you were thinking about doing something that might impact him before you ever did it. I got to tell you, in my experience as a zoning administrator, a lot of that is never even given any consideration. And so, basically zoning administrators are largely a component of the complaint department for a town. And here's the real reason you want zoning. Because today, everything is much more litigious. Lawyers will call the town and say, "We have to certify the title of this house here. And we want to make sure that this house is compliant with the zoning regulations." So we open the file. And here's this single-family house that was built 10 years ago. And the permit didn't call for any decks or porches or accessory garages or hub buildings or whatever. Lo and behold, there is today, big decks, in-ground pools, freestanding storage buildings. None of them have permits. Well, if you didn't have permits, um, then you're not compliant with the zoning regulations. And, but then, then the deal gets complicated because you clouded your title, you can't sell the property. And sometimes you can't re-mortgage the property without clear title. So, the whole idea of zoning is not to be onerous, although the demands of the public have made it much more complicated. The whole purpose of zoning is to keep everybody informed. So, I got to tell you, my own experience is that people will knock down a barn and never tell the lister, don't think anything about it. And the listers don't know until they have a reappraisal eight years later. They tax you for something that you've knocked down without a permit. So, that's, that happens more times than you would think.
I, I, I can believe it. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure there are people out there, well, even if they know they're supposed to get a permit, will figure that, "I'll just pay the taxes till they reappraise because it'll be handier than getting a permit and having to wait six months till I can actually do it." Because somebody protested, you know? That's frustrating.
I got to tell you, appeals are very rare. Um, and usually, part of the appeal is that, has nothing to do with the project, it has something to do with an axe to grind with your neighbor. But, but appeals are very rare. I, I write between 150 and 200 permits a year because I work for three towns. And I don't probably get an appeal except one every other three years.
Really?
Total. Yeah. So, so that's, that's not really a component, I think, of, of...
And that...
But the whole idea of zoning is, is that what you have on your property should match what the town records are taxing you for and/or what, you know, you're, you're approved for, uh, when it comes to their title.
And truthfully, if it's, uh, a permit that is issued by the zoning administrator, you get it within 30 days, tops. Because if it's not, uh, if it's not rejected, or it's not approved, or it's not moved, 30 days after my first review, it's automatically approved. However, I've had people walk in wanting a deck, they had their, their map, they had everything ready to go, walked out with a permit. The time-consuming one that you're talking about is the Development Review Board. Because by state law, there has to be a public hearing notice of 15 days, which means it has to go into the Rutland Herald. And the Rutland Herald, as I know, you know, doesn't publish every day anymore. So if I get a notice into them on Monday, it might be published on Thursday. And that Thursday has to be at least 15 days before the Development Review Board hearing. And if it isn't, then it has to get moved to the next month. So that, certified letters have to go out to all of the property abutters, all of them, including the ones across the street, um, that there's going to be a public hearing on this individual. So, uh, for example, we just had a hearing on Tuesday of last week. Tuesday or Wednesday? Wednesday. Wednesday of last week. The minutes are done. A facts of finding has to be written up. The facts of findings, the draft is already written up, it's already out to the committee. They have to review it to be sure that, um, there are no typos, that it says exactly what the committee wants. They approve it. I issue the permit, or the zoning administrator, after it's signed off, issues the permit. Because that is a Development Review Board, um, permit, you have to display the big, huge P sign for 30 days in case there is an appeal to the, uh, environmental court. After the 30 days, you're free to do whatever you want. So, if I issue the permit on Monday, I actually, the date where you could start work is 15 days after the date the permit is issued. There's a big difference on that. The Development Review Board, basically, and if you go through the zoning, you'll see where it says, "The following are conditional uses and need Development Review Board meets and site plan approvals." That's a different story. But we have been managing to get them out approved and the P sign at least hung up between 45 and 60 days. And there are towns that take the full 90 days. We try not to do that. So we, in Wallingford, the Development Review Board has decided to meet on a monthly basis, which is what they weren't doing before. So everyone knows that this is the, the meeting date. And, uh, for example, if somebody needs a development review this week, uh, and they get, I'm using this example only, and the permit comes through, it is denied by the administrator. One of the things that the administrator does is get in touch with that individual if they're not standing right in front of the desk and say, "I am referring this to the Development Review Board, you have a right to, uh, to refer to it." They go across the hallway to Julie's office and say, "I'm appealing to the Development Review Board. Here's my check. Here's the sign." Julie signs it, brings it back to me, or I'm usually with them anyway. And from that day on, the clock is ticking. So we do try to get it out as quickly as possible. We don't take six months unless there's a major problem. And I don't know, I think the longest we've ever taken on anything is about, uh, three months. I could be wrong, but I don't remember that. So we do move fairly fast. I do know of one town in the state, and I don't, I won't say which town it is, that I was told, um, takes as long as they really want to. Because by state statute, um, and we did look this up because, uh, at one point, the, um, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, some of the planners, uh, because I asked that question, how soon after they receive the permit application do they have to meet? And everybody has assumed it's within 30 days. By state statute, whenever they want. They can hold it for six months if they choose to do so. We don't do that. So, uh, we do try to expedite as accurately as humanly possible everything. And with due diligence. So, okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Jeff?
Okay, so I have a few questions. So earlier you said, Erica, that this is the third informational meeting, public hearing?
Public hearing.
Um, and that you brought, obviously after the first one, there must have been enough feedback, you had to significantly change the document.
Yes.
And so, so we're at the third hearing here. The third hearing here, in my mind, and I'm asking for confirmation, is kind of critical because if there are no significant changes to the existing document proposed, then, uh, you don't have to make anything but minor changes and you can recommend or vote tonight to forward this to the select board for their public hearing.
Correct.
In which case the select board could approve, um, to have a public hearing. And, and you have time to just warn your vote, uh, your, your election at the town meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if there is something tonight that's significant to, to change the document, that throws your whole calendar all off.
It can, yes. However, according to, um, it depends on what it is. According to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, which of course is one we refer to, as you know, uh, they said you can continue to make changes, but, um, I would prefer not to.
Well, you, you're allowed under the statute to make minor changes.
Right.
I understand.
Right, minor.
Um, significant changes set you back to a next hearing.
And another public hearing.
Uh, yeah, to, to another public hearing. Well, folks that aren't aware of this, this planning commission has probably been working on this document for, well, pre-pandemic, seven years? Six, seven, six years? Six, seven, six years. And in that six years, there's been, you know, not meteoric changes in the volume of permits from the town, but it hasn't been good for the town not to be able to have something in the way of an improved document in that six-year period. This is an improved document from the existing zoning. So I was only going to come, I have all kinds of minor changes, and I have a few questions about why the table of uses is in the document at all. And I don't know if it's a workable table of uses. I don't, I have reservations on. So let me give you an example, and just as food for thought. So if I came into you and I'm in the agro-residential zone, and I want to build a a camp on my agro-residential property. If you go to page sixteen, recite it from wrong, I do this, you know, a little bit in the basis, the space is blank.
That is, and if you look up top, it says blank, indicates not permitted.
You're saying people can't put a detached camp on their agro-residential ownership?
I don't see the word camp anywhere.
It's the number, it's down, I'm starting on page sixteen, the table starts on page sixteen. I'm talking about the use.
That is, that is my, that's an error, a typographical error on my part.
Okay, so that's an example of where I think there's errors in the table of uses.
We've gone through the table, but of course, we
There's a lot of blank spaces. I mean, there should be, you know, permitted use, conditional use, or prohibited use. But there's an awful lot of blank spaces. Just my observation. And that's my biggest concern about this particular draft, but. My point being is if you get this progress approved at town meeting, then this doesn't really address Act forty-seven, the Home Act. Is that correct, or did you folks take that into account?
Logan gave us the information to put into it.
I mean, I saw what was in here. I've read this cover to cover a few times. And so I don't think it's in conflict with Act forty-seven, I just don't know if it has everything. And of course, this year, the legislature is going to make you do it all over. The legislature is crafting new laws, just like they did last year, which are going to impact zoning, I mean, require zoning changes. So with that anticipation, I can point out some spelling errors, I can point out, you know, some duplication, redundancy, which would be minor changes. I don't want to take everybody's time on that, it's not important. I really don't like this table. But I'd rather have something, you know, I don't want to throw out the baby with the bath. So I'd rather have the town weigh in on this and hopefully approve it because I think it's a much more improved document than what you have to work with today. And then repeat the process as soon as you can. Your town plan is up to date, right?
For another year and a half.
Okay, so your town plan is
We are
You have something that's better now. That table of, I mean, what'll happen here, in my experience, is if you have this table of uses, you're going to find out where the flaws in it through real-life, day-to-day activity. So
And then make sense as we go through.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to bring to the table. Thank you for listening.
Well, we can vote to get rid of the table, too. We can vote to get rid of the table. That's just a couple of deletions. Yes.
And I said this to Erica, they said that you could pick up a paper copy of the zoning in the town office, which I tried to do today, and couldn't. And I had to go and look at it with my computer. But see, here, all of you have paper copies, and you can write all over them. And I would have had to go get a new cartridge for my printer for, but you know what I mean?
The only reason why we have paper copies is because I have two laser printers at home.
I don't know, I don't, I don't But this is why it's really handy to have things in hand.
Yeah.
And to turn to page sixty-seven, well, I could look this up with my phone, but it would be like
We're old school. I'm old school, but I printed these off at home for the commission in case we did have to make any changes. But it was done on my printers, using my paper.
You can't use the paper copies anymore?
Yes, I could. It's just that at five-thirty at night, you know, it's easier, quite frankly, it's easier for me to do it at home sometimes. And I, all I did on this was just download what was on the town website and say, "Run five copies," and it just printed up, which is of course what you could do, too. It's the PDF file that's on there, but you're more than welcome to take that copy since our other commissioner's not here tonight.
Oh, that's really nice.
Go buy a lottery ticket, it's your lucky day.
Monica, do I have a quick question? Erica, you all have been working on this since 2017, that's a really long time.
Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, yeah.
I want to say, like, wow, thank you. One of the things you were talking about in the beginning were, since 2017 in Wallingford, new things are coming up, and you just threw out tiny houses, and you said, "And other things." I'm just kind of wondering, and I have not read this, and I'm sorry because it's really amazing. Can you just toss out some other things that have just come up since 2017, like tiny houses?
Truthfully speaking, I can't. The only, this is, this is a
Are they not in here?
No, it's probably in here. It's a personal issue. My husband is living in Northfield because he's teaching at Norwich, and it's easier for him, and he just rented a tiny house. So that's the only reason why that came to mind.
So there's, we talked about garages, decks, road frontage, the things that kind of, you all know exist in zoning.
Well, okay.
I'm wondering about, like, is it Airbnbs that we're talking about in the town?
It's renewable energy or alternative energy, solar. That was new. Screen service areas to deal with that type of thing. Yeah.
Kind of like windmills and
That is actually the energy committee, the energy committee that's supposed to deal with that, but
It's not a zoning issue?
Not yet.
Until they're done with it.
What about the chickens? Or shoreline? That's probably changed over the
The what?
Shoreline.
The shoreline goes with the flooding and the hazardous, and that is the, I believe, the additional, if you look, it's Appendix B, it's been attached. The Select Board granted approval to attach it to the zoning because it's all in one place, and that was on the recommendation of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, it's all together. The chickens or
Just kidding, I'm kidding about the chickens. You said
Farm animals, farm animals are addressed, but we addressed it, it's in here, and I think it's section four-twenty-one? No, I was wrong.
I think it's out.
Yeah, I think, I think we may have taken it out. Primarily because those are state statutes, and we just felt that at that particular point, it just, you know, it was just easier not to do that.
So I was really just kidding about chickens, but
But
I remember the big kerfluffle bond at the same time.
Yeah.
So it was just tiny houses, it was not like
Tiny houses were, they were just addressed to the fact that they are still, even though they're tiny houses and people say, "Well, you know, they're a special," I can't
Category.
Thank you, category. We just addressed it that, yeah, it is. However, it still falls under the same regulations as any other place that you would live in, in the sense of it's got to have codes and et cetera, et cetera.
Are there changes, like with Airbnbs in the town?
Airbnbs, we just, we didn't address because, quite frankly, until, and this is, well, it does address short-term rentals on page fifteen, if you have a copy. Let's see, for those that don't have a copy, short-term rentals, as you see, is, except where permitted, require a conditional use permit upon approval by the Development Review Board. Short-term rentals are subject to Vermont statutes pertaining to short-term rentals. So, and the only place really that you could kind of slide under that a little bit would be in the neighborhood commercial, because we do mention hotels in there. However, I will say, as the zoning administrator, my husband and I are, apply to operate a private bed and breakfast, dealing with his clients when they come in to visit, that they stay at our house, and I'm tired of cooking for free, so I'm charging them. And in order to do that, I wanted to be sure that we were all legal. I went through the process, and I do have a permit to operate a private Airbnb.
For term hospitality?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're calling it a private Airbnb because overseas, they have no idea what we're talking about. And I went through the Development Review Board process. I called the fire marshal, the state fire marshal, and he came, and he inspected the house, so I have the certificate from that. I also have a health certificate for the kitchen. Not that I expect anyone to cook, but it's there. So I went through the process, even though technically speaking, I could have said, "Well, you know, I live in the neighborhood commercial and everything else." The whole idea is, quite frankly, reading what is going on in the state. They don't, the state itself doesn't have a handle on how to handle short-term rentals, but they are beginning to look at it and look at it very closely. Because as I'm sure some of you might be aware, there are towns, I've read articles in the paper where they're, the towns are ghost towns because all the houses are short-term rentals and everything else. And the other thing is, of course, I didn't want anyone to say, "Well, take a look, you know, you should have had one and you didn't," no. As somebody once said, "Well," you know, favoritism, and I said, "I would find my own husband if he was outside of the rules and regulations." And those of you that know me know I do it, too, but
So no real big changes?
No, not, not when it comes to that, but, but on the short-term rentals, the state is, I'm almost a hundred percent positive the state is going to start coming up with rules and regulations. There are already handouts on making sure that you have a fire marshal come through and that you're up to date on the fire requirements, getting a health certificate. A lot of towns are looking at insisting that short-term rentals are listed in the town database. So if somebody comes in and they say, "Hey, I need a place to stay," they can do it, but there's also a fee for it. The state is, one of the articles I read said that the state is throwing out the idea of having a stateside register of all of the short-term rentals. Primarily because, you know, people, and I know we have a history here in Vermont of, "Hey, I got a bedroom, and, you know, I can rent it out and make some extra cash." As Jeff was saying, you know, flatlanders versus locals. And I am too a flatlander, although I'm from Connecticut, so I'm a New Englander. But the idea being that, you know, I can make a little extra money. We'll rent out a bedroom, and what's the big problem? Well, the big problem is you're not charging meals taxes. So the state is a little upset because they're not getting their tax. The other thing is, what is the health code? The other thing is, and I have been questioned about this, and I have asked my insurance, and I have looked at Airbnb, and I have looked at other places about having insurance because people will say, "Well, you know, I don't need to get extra insurance, my homeowner's covered." And according to all the insurance companies I've read and talked to, it's like, no, it doesn't.
So that's not the zoning thing?
Yeah, and quite frankly, which I find kind of funny, is I also did a limited liability company. So we're, we have a LLC. And the company that I hired to do that paperwork, because I didn't feel like doing it, when they sent me my certificate for the LLC, the individual I was working with called me and said, you know, "It's there, it's on the way, you're going to get it, and oh, by the way, you need to get all of the town required permits." And I laughed and I said, "I have." But the state may start cracking down. I don't know.
I was just questioning if in this, this document since twenty, since 2017, if there were big changes in terms of maps that we've talked about, anything about
There's nothing, no, the maps haven't changed.
Things like Airbnbs and
That's the only reference to an Airbnb because the state, the state hasn't addressed it.
Just, yeah, that was my question.
I know, but I'm sure that Jeff will back me up. This is a frustration that I'm reading on the zoning administrator listservs. People are saying, "Well, I can do this, it's my property, I can, I can run an Airbnb," and
So is that unsightly solar?
Solar panels, according to the state. If you want to put a solar panel up on your property, you can do so, and it can't be regulated. To a certain extent. To a certain extent.
To a certain extent.
Yeah. So it's that type of thing. It's, you know, you do have to take into consideration your neighbors and everything, obviously. But, you know, if you want to put a windmill up, there's a problem. So
They basically took out a lot of the old language of the these and the those, it just weren't even applicable now, to simplify things.
So, Rob?
Just a couple of things around the, on the table. I looked at it, and I didn't go into great detail, but what I did find, and I'll show you, too, is also a text section either before or after the table that seems to have end of one, one in person, but it seems to basically be doing the same thing, and there's no way I looked through to see if they were consistent. So it's all, yeah.
I'm confused why there is a table personally. I think you improved your, your uses, conditional uses, permitted uses in each of the zoning districts. And I think you're running, I think you run the risk of the table being in conflict.
Well, we can take that out. That's an easy one. Even I can do that.
I guess no, but there's probably some conflict that's going to show up. I don't think it's necessary. That's my suggestion.
Yep.
You know, we've been back and forth on it. I don't think any one of us is wedded to having the table in. So if somebody wants, if either one of you or I will make a move.
Gesture that if it's redundant with the text, get rid of it.
It is, yeah.
But that's the rub, that's not a minor change. That'll be a substantial change. You'll have to back to the Select Board on the media.
Yeah, I know, that is the rub. But actually, before it goes before the Select Board, we can vote to have it taken out.
Well, just put it in real small print, and then it'll be a minor change.
Just a click, that's pretty minor.
If we're going to take that approach, I've got one more for you.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. I, we can check to be sure on this, but we can meet to remove it before we send it over. We can meet again and then vote to remove it or not. And I will check to be sure that we can do that without having to have another public hearing.
While you're doing that, can I ask another question?
Sure, go ahead.
Section four-fifteen on page ten, uses not permitted otherwise, none of those prohibited uses.
Four-fifteen, yeah.
The last one is marijuana dispensary and methadone clinic. I guess I'm confused. Didn't the town vote in its last general election to allow marijuana dispensaries?
No, I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
I thought it approved. I mean, I could be wrong.
It did, but at the time, this is actually right from the current zoning. This came over directly from the current zoning, and they didn't repeal the current zoning. So, and I checked on this, with the, when they voted, what they should have done is, A, voted to repeal in the current zoning, the language saying that it wasn't allowed, and then came back and vote on getting it, and they didn't do, and the town did not do that. So, and this has been, as I said, this is in the current one, this, this came straight over from the current one. So the town would actually have to vote to get it repealed from the current, and we can take it out of here. But quite frankly, and I've had questions about, "Oh, can't we have a marijuana dispensary here in town?" And, you know, we, there are people, obviously, that would like to have one, but looking at what the marijuana board But looking at what the marijuana board is saying, you can't have it within 500 feet of a school. So that's kind of limits everything. Plus the fact that, let's face it, we don't have the, we don't have the police.
And the town does not profit at all from it being there, because every cent of the tax goes to the state. We get zero.
And it's just a quick ride on the bus up to Rutland, and you have a whole-
There you go.
There you go.
Buy as much as you want.
But if the town didn't, okay, so there was a vote. It wasn't a vote to repeal and change. It was, but the public interest was certainly there for the dispensary, but the steps weren't correct.
Right.
So we're sitting here being like, okay, you just go to Rutland, or it's 500 feet from the school. Like, there's other, there's other places that are not 500 feet, that are 500 feet from the school. So I think that's a pretty legitimate-
Well, it absolutely is, and, but-
Concern that is getting rolled into the bottom of page 10, when the town did, when the voters did actually say they would possibly be interested. It's not a question of whether or not the town benefits, or if we can go to Rutland. It's a question of what people-
As you said, it just-
Thought they were voting on.
It just wasn't-
Didn't turn out to be what they voted on. They, they didn't repeal it. It's a two-step process.
Was it done properly?
It wasn't done properly, so should that really be rolled into page 10 here? Or should it be brought back up for discussion?
It could be brought back up for discussion, I would assume.
How does that happen?
But until this got approved, the town would, for example, if, if somebody wanted to bring it up, it would have to go through the two-step process to get it out of the current one. And we can take it out of here. But it, it was left in because it was still in the current one. In other words-
I understand that completely, but that just seems a little backdoorish. You know what I'm saying? Because people did vote and said like, huh, interesting. Yeah, let's talk about it. And now it's here as prohibited.
But this is, has not been approved. This is proposed, and we can, it can be taken out.
Could it be highlighted, maybe, so that the conversation can turn back up again and done properly?
Sure. We could do that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Interesting.
I have a minor change suggestion.
Hold on.
Page 13, line item 498.
Okay, just hold on, please. 13.
But this addresses street sales, garage sales, tags, utilities, sales. The last sentence says, marketing of goods, materials, food, et cetera, for longer than this permitted period. Well, what it says here, let me start again. For up to 15 days per calendar year, will not require a local permit. So you have a 15-day window every year. They have garage sales, tag sales, food sales, whatever. 15 days a year without getting a local permit. Town of Wallingford has a vendor's ordinance. There's, it's silent here on that. It says, providing the sale does not interfere with public right of ways, et cetera.
13.
Material, marketing of goods, materials, food, et cetera, for longer than this permitted 15-day period, requires the applicable zoning permit. I think you would best add or town vendor license.
Okay, Jeff, I don't, what page are you on?
Okay, page 13.
Yeah.
Yep.
Line 498. This is off the town website, so it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with taxation.
Oh, okay.
Or town-
What section is it?
It is section 421.
Okay, hold on.
Exemptions to town permit requirements. That one is exempt.
Yes.
All right, let me, just a second, please. Let me get to it. 421. Okay.
We can get up from the-
Got it. Sorry. Um, all right. Unfortunately, because for some reason, my page number's all screwed up here. All right, street sales, garage, and you're saying to add in-
Okay, so the last sentence is that there. Marketing of goods, materials, food, et cetera, for longer than this permitted in the period referenced, 15 days, permitted 15 days period, requires the applicable zoning permit. My suggestion is to add or vendor license.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is that 15 days, is that, is the period? So that people don't have this standing of-
Yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah. That is definitely why.
Are you more consecutive in there? Because-
Oh, no. No, we don't like consecutive. Because it means like you have it two days this weekend, two days that weekend. That's the way most people do it. They don't do it all at once.
So this is just to keep people from having a permanent ugly yard sale?
Yeah.
Yep.
A junk sale.
Exactly. Thank you.
So-
Perpetual years.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to have one big long one for, for two weeks in a day, or you can have one every, one day every month in November, December, and January. You have two days in mind.
Yeah, it's-
Got it.
Yep.
No junk on seven.
Speaking of continuity.
Yeah.
This, this came on, came up the last time it was a big storm. And there was a, I don't know if someone misread something, or it was misprinted or whatever. But there was this belief, which I think was incorrect, or it's been corrected, regarding RV storage on your own property. There seemed to be a belief that you could only store it for 21 days. You had to drive, yeah. That it, that's clarified, didn't you, that you can store it for 30 years. But you can't live with it. If you're sleeping, you got to spend the night somewhere else before you come back.
Yep, exactly.
Oh, thank you, Erica.
All right. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, so any other suggestions, corrections?
Yeah, I move, we adjourn.
I submit my draft. You can reach out. You can go through it on your own time, folks.
Okay.
We will.
If you have any questions, just email it. I always better wipe them all out and edit that, so I don't see what we have.
And any typos you find, please highlight them. I've gone through this document where I'm cross-eyed, and yeah, it's, you all, as you well know, you read what you think you're-
That's the end of the board.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so- I'm going to get a motion to close this hearing. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Let me make sure. So Jill, close.
I'll second it.
Kevin, second. It's a little difficult in this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, let's take that.
You get the silent vote.
Who are the other two people?
Tony Musick and Lucy Thayer.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, okay. And so I propose this meeting is adjourned at 26 minutes after-
Yeah, we got to reschedule our next-
Before you do that, aren't you going to vote to-
Oh, yes.
Forward to the select board. Are you going to have another meeting?
We're going to have to have another meeting.
We're going to have to have another meeting.
Our next meeting is the third, is scheduled for the-
Consider our promise.
Again, you don't want to just, this election-
Right.
Yeah.
More discussion.
But there are really changes, so they have to-
So are they to postpone the interchanges, like, what?
No, actually, actually, we could, if you wish, we could take a vote and make the proposal. And I can check tomorrow. Thank you. I can check tomorrow to see if we can do that.
I'll so propose.
Okay, so Kevin, change table. What about pot stock? Delete it. Table. And do you want to have a marijuana?
Sure.
And marijuana?
Thank you.
Jill?
One second.
Do you have a second?
Sure. Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.